Roll call, please.
Uman present.
Smith present.
Grantson present. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So everyone have a chance to read the minutes of our last meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from December 20th, 2023.
Set it.
Changes as is. All those in favor?
Uman I.
Smith I.
Grantson I. All right. Is anybody coming for this public hearing? Does anybody know? Huh? Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
The public hearing is in relationship to a 61A release on 71 Maple Street, lot number three. We've got a couple of these come through already. And it's been approved by the fire apartment, a fire department, and they've actually given an address to it, which is 71 Maple. All the other departments have seen it. You don't want this piece of property? Okay. Stuff you want. You have any money?
I have no money.
Any questions on it? All those in favor of releasing?
Uman I.
Smith I.
Grantson I. That's what we're voting on. Just write what you want, comment. Did I already got the minutes done? Would you like me to repeat that? All those in favor of releasing lot three on 71 Maple Street?
Smith I.
Grantson I. All right, moving forward. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing, which we seem to be interested in.
Set it.
Next on our agenda is our Ovi Town Clerk. Kathy Farrow will give us a town clerk update. We're going to try each meeting to bring in someone to update us on the departments, what's going on, what we can anticipate as we move forward. So Kathy got first crack at it.
Volunteer for the first.
I really did. I asked to be first because we're hitting the ground running this year. And I gave you my budget, and I'm happy to answer questions about it. It's very straightforward, but there's a lot happening this year, and I'm happy to have the opportunity to tell the community, warn everybody what's coming up. So I don't know how you want me to move forward.
Why don't we go over the calendar first, Kathy? And then we can discuss the budget if you want.
Okay. So the presidential primary calendar has all the dates that are relevant earlier. And you have that in front of you. And what's important for the voters to know is that we're having early voting in person. It's mandated by the state, and that begins on February 24th. So would you like me to read through it? Because the steps kind of matter.
Probably.
For what's going to happen. So this Friday, the State Elections Division is going to pull a mailing list from the list of voters for a vote by mail application. And we did this a couple of years ago since essentially COVID and then the Votes Act of 2022. Much of the provisions they put forward then, they've made formal now. So they're going to be pulling a list on this Friday to send postcards to people at home. And I would just ask folks to read the postcard and fill it out as they wish. Not everybody likes to vote in primaries. If you vote or check off all elections this year, I will mail you ballots for the local election. So just, and don't send me the cards back with little, you know, nasty notes on them because I'm not sending them. The Secretary of State is. And it's all for good reason. I'm not sure that the numbers of people who vote by mail or vote early in person add up, but it's another means for people who can't show up to the polls to do that. Saturday, the 20th, is the deadline for the state to mail us those postcards. So if you haven't registered to vote, and we have a really good record of people registering to vote here in Sterling, if you haven't registered by Friday, you're not going to receive a postcard. But if you register after Friday and before the registration deadline, which is until February 23rd, we will send you an application to vote by mail. In February, so yeah, the deadline to register to vote, if you haven't already, and many folks feel like they have to register again, you don't. If you've registered to vote and you fill out your census, you're good. If you need to check it, call our office, that's fine. But if you want to change your party or your party enrollment, because this is a primary, that deadline is the 23rd. So if you're an unenrolled voter and you walk into the primary and you wish to choose one or other of the major party ballots as a Republican, Democrat, and Libertarian presidential ballot, you can choose anyone you want. If you're enrolled in a party, you'll be handed the one you get. Whichever one you choose, if you're unenrolled, that's the one you pick. And if you make a mistake, you get that same one again. We are required by MGL to have early voting. That begins Saturday, February 24th. We are required to have weekend voting hours for early voting in person. I am meeting with the registrars at the end of January, and I need their approval and recommendations about hours. We're given, based on our population and the number of registered voters, options and how many hours we have to offer that. And I'll leave that up to our registrars. But the period begins Saturday, February 24th, and it runs through Friday, February 30th. Keep in mind that on Tuesday, February 27th, if you want to vote by mail, the application is due to us by 5:00 PM that day. So if the Secretary of State sends you a postcard, or if we send you an application to vote by mail because you registered after this Friday, if I don't get it by Tuesday, February 27th, you've missed the deadline. There is another option, though. If somebody can't make it to the polls, they can come to my office and vote in-person absentee up until 12:00 noon on Monday, the day before the primary. And then the presidential primary is March 5th from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Houghton Elementary School. And that's the presidential primary.
Is that going to be on the website, Kathy?
Yes. In fact, we finalized these calendars today. The one locally, I had to have confirmed, but this will be on the website tomorrow. What I can't put in yet are the times for early voting because I need my registrars to approve those. All right. Would you like me to go over the local calendar now? Or do we have questions?
You have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Our 2024 local election calendar, we have both our annual town meeting and annual town election, both events on one warrant. And so that dictates voter registration deadlines. So March 8th, I'll let you know right away. I have nomination papers available downstairs, and I'll let you know what offices are up and if you want to know what incumbents are up and that sort of thing. I can share that with you, however much information you want. So you can see that on the local calendar here, on March 8th, it's the last day for the board to notify me of any vacancies. Pretty much, I'm aware of them right now, and I've included them on my calendar, particularly with the board of health. But if there are any others that come up, I need to know by March 8th. Last day to obtain nomination papers from our office is the 21st of March, and the last day to file nomination papers is the 25th of March. The last day to register to vote for the annual town meeting and the annual town election because it's on the same warrant is April 26th. And we will be posting the warrant by April 29th. We can do it sooner. And May 6th is the deadline for a vote by mail application for the local election. And I'm assuming this now, and I've done my budget based on what the registrars have recommended in the past, that we will do no excuse vote by mail for our local election. We will not do voting in person for the local election. And I did my budget, and I'm under the assumption that the board would approve the reduced hours for the local election, saving us money in the community. But those things aren't finalized yet. I'll come back to you or ask you if you need me to come back. But well, I was thinking the meeting on Valentine's Day would be a good time to ask you to sign the warrant and approve what the registrars recommend. So if they go with what we've been doing in the past, there's really no action for you to take. If you wish for us to do voting in person for the local election, or you don't want to have to offer vote by mail, then we would have to take action. Any questions on the local election? Do you want to know what offices are up?
So far?
Yes.
Sure.
Well, so far, it doesn't really change. As I shuffle, please forgive me. I'm not myself tonight. Huh? On the Board of Assessors, we have one position open. It's a three-year term. It's Donlin Maurice. On the Board of Health, we have one position for a three-year term for Emery Cottolano. We also have on the Board of Health a two-year term for Richard Lane, who is the incumbent appointed until the end of this term. Maureen's term is up. That's a select board term for three years. On the DPW Board, we have a three-year term, and that's Andrew Parker's position. On the Library Board of Trustees, we need two folks, each a three-year term, and those are the positions for Judith Doherty, who filled in a one-year seat, and Amanda Sayet. And on the Planning Board, we have a five-year term to, it's Patty Page's position. Our Town Moderator is up for election. That's Jennifer Scalise-Mullet. That's a three-year term. The Municipal Light Board, Eric Darlington, that's a three-year term. And then on the Wachusett School Committee, Sue Valentine's term is up, and that's a three-year term. So again, I have nomination papers available now, and they are available until March 21st. And the vote by mail application for the local election deadline is May 6th. Last day to register, if you're not already, is April 26th. And that's for the annual town meeting and annual town election.
So you can, May 6th vote by mail? That's the application or that's when the?
That's the deadline to give me an application that you want me to mail you a ballot. And this is for the local election.
So that's just a week before?
It's 10 days, actually.
Is it 10 days?
Yeah. Yeah, because the local election is.
Seven days.
Seven days. That's the new law. I had these dates verified by the state because there are some.
It just seems close.
No kidding.
I'm not.
No. What they've done is, yeah. Not the time for that, but.
And all those vacancies will be posted on the website also.
Yes.
As always.
Yes. I'm not going to list whose job it is. I usually send them a little note. I'm saying it now, just so you know who the people are, because I hope most of them run again, all of them, I hope, run again. I've heard from some who may not. And so if that's the case, then I'm just giving everybody enough heads up to say, this is important. You know? Local government is very important, and so we need to have really good people step forward to fill the shoes of some people who have been doing some really hard work for a long time, many of these folks who may not step forward again.
All right. Any questions?
Nope.
David? All right. And we just got these budget worksheets, so did you want to highlight any of this, Kathy? Or you wanted to talk about all of it? Or does Joe want to see one?
I've already met with Paul Austin, my liaison. And I've just, you know, it's nothing fancy. It is up in overall 8.23%. And that's primarily because we know in the next fiscal year, we're having two major elections and a local election. Hopefully, we don't throw a few other events in there. Wage increases have gone up to $15 an hour. It's minimum wage for my election officials. The warden gets more, constables get more. We pay for the police. And I anticipate the state, I know the state has to reimburse us for unfunded mandates and costs, so we can anticipate some of that. And I have worked this budget around the idea that for our local elections, we're going to do abbreviated hours with no excuse vote by mail. That saves us about $4,000. A little over maybe.
Joe likes that word, save.
Right? So.
In a big way.
Yeah.
The board has agreed in the past to these abbreviated hours. I need to run it past my registrars, hoping that works again for everybody. And if not, you know, the numbers might need to go up. I don't know.
Kathy, do you know off the top of your head what it cost for us to do that special town meeting?
Top of my head?
Yeah.
About the special town meeting? I'm going to ballpark five grand. I don't, yeah. For my, for the work that I had to do in my office, I'm going to ballpark five grand. But that.
A special town?
Yeah. But you're catching me off guard, Maureen.
That's the plan.
No, do you have a better sense?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
I know it's more than that.
You know it's more than that.
Sound and other things, so.
Right. I'm talking about my office.
Five thousand just for your office and then, yeah.
Sound people.
Just curious.
Sound people were probably in the fours, 4,000, 42, 46? Like that. Clicker folks, I think, were four, 4,500, so.
I know we allocated 15 grand for the combination of the STM and the special election bill, so I think we put it in that envelope.
I was excited that we were able to get our capital equipment before that meeting, and it was an unexpected meeting. It was scheduled at 6:30, and I'm looking around the hall at 6:30, and there's about 100 people in the room, and I'm thinking, where is everybody? They showed up at 6:30, and I had six people to rest. We got them sat in 10 minutes.
You are special, Kathy, in so many ways.
No, I remember years being in that hall where people were standing in line and we're thinking, oh, my.
Right out the door, onto the sidewalk, yeah.
So that was, that was worth it. And we also got our tabulators, so I'm really excited. We're not going to do any advanced processing or, you know, we're going to do everything at the election for every one of these elections coming up.
Yeah.
We'll have two tabulators in each precinct. It's going to be awesome. I'm excited.
Any questions about Kathy's budget proposal?
Not for the budget, Kathy, but I know I brought this up before about your poll workers. Are you concerned you're going to have enough poll workers for the upcoming year?
Wow, we are really lucky to have some dedicated people in this town. And I don't think it's a coincidence that a lot of my poll workers serve in other capacities in town. These are real solid citizens. But I'm happy you bring it up, David, because during the presidential primary, we're going to be electing our town committee members for the major parties. And so anyone who's on the ballot can't work the election. That takes away many of my people. And so I'd like to say that I'm allowed to have two teenagers, 16 or 17 years old, per shift, per precinct. So that's up to four kids. To get involved, there is training required. They'll get paid minimum wage, and they'll get credit for National Honor Society, for college applications, whatever. If it's a day, I think the fifth, the schools have taken the day off, so they won't have to get an excuse. Love to have the young kids in. They're smart, and it's a great way for them to get involved, and either they love it and want to stay involved, which I've, you know, I've recruited one young person who stayed involved and really likes this work. By doing this, she came first to me at a primary when I needed help. And I think it's a good way to get kids involved. So if anybody knows, I'd like a Sterling student to come. Four of them I have room for. But otherwise, I think, David, I have enough good people to call on and backups. So we are lucky that way. They come for Hamilton Catering's food. That's certainly the truth, don't they?
No question. All right.
May I just add a few more things?
Fine.
All right. I know you want to get out of here quickly. It's sort of what census, I've been told it was supposed to go out on the second, which was yesterday, will be mailed tomorrow. So you should get it Friday or over the weekend. There's a snowstorm, I don't know. By next week, you should have your census. And I just, real quickly, want to just go over that you are required to sign and return the census. There'll be an enclosed envelope within 10 days, even if there aren't any changes. Sign it, send it back. If you look at the census and your children are missing, please add them so that the schools know they're coming up and first responders know they live in your house, because if they're not on your census, they're not in my voter registration and residence system. And that's important. The form is not used to register to vote or to change a party affiliation. I think some people think it is. That's not what it's for, but it is required to be returned. And compliance with this state requirement provides proof of residence. It's protection of voting rights. It protects veterans' bonuses, housing for the elderly and other related benefits, as well as providing information for selection of jurors. And the other thing I would add, and we have a very clean list, I'm proud of it, but if you get in your home two censuses, because maybe the people in the house have two different last names, and I've inherited this system, and I'm trying to clean it up, but if you're on the same family, please return it in the same envelope, sign it, and let me know these people are in the same household. So you'll get one census the next time. That just helps us clean up any vacancies and the list in and of itself. So you should be getting that, and I ask you to return it as soon as possible. Inside the census is an application to register your dog. And it goes out in every census. And I know many residents are very sensitive, particularly if they've lost their fur baby recently. I called you, I told you that my baby's gone, and I'm sorry if that hurts people to have to go through that again. It's just the most cost-effective way for us to do it. So seniors, folks who are over 70, you get yours for free. Send it back. We'll send you the tag as long as the dog has a current rabies. And they're due by April 15th, tax day. In March, the Animal Patrol Advisory Board sponsors a rabies clinic. And so if you don't have a current rabies before the 15th, you can get in there for $15 and get it done, and it lasts for three years. Call us if you have any questions. It's a real easy process. It's important. All we need to know is the dogs are vaccinated and who their person is. So the annual town reports are due February 2nd for all boards, committees, departments, that sort of thing. Annual state ethics compliance information was sent out at the end of the year. It's done on the state portal now. Annually, everybody who's an employee or special employee or elected official or appointed official must annually acknowledge the Conflict of Interest Form on the state portal and every two years take the ethics test. That's due by January, no, I'm sorry. Let's do, I'm not policing that. Let's do, just do it. No, you go in the portal and you know how off you are. I'm not policing that, the state is. What I have to police is the campaign finance, and that's due January 22nd. So anybody who's an elected official in town, I would ask them, many have already come in, I've sent them the information the end of last year, but if they could just come in and sign the end-of-year form, I sent them the form, fill it out, pop it in the box out front, and we'll just be in compliance by January 22nd. And that's all I have.
Any more questions, David?
None, thank you.
Thank you for having me and the opportunity to put out all this important information. The new census will be on the town website, on our website tomorrow, as well as the calendars. All right. Thank you very much.
Any else have a question for Kathy? All right, then. Thanks, Kath. Thanks for coming in.
Aye.
Wow, that's a lot of information. Nice job. All right. Okay. And I had asked for this, to talk about this ZBA requirement for not just barubis, but food trucks in town. A couple of years ago, and I see the rubies are here tonight. Welcome. Did you bring any snacks? Nothing?
Nothing.
Seriously. So anyway, this is something that was implemented a couple of years ago. My question on it is, and it's changed a little bit since then, in that in the past, the food trucks not only needed to have a zoning board hearing and the zoning agent, but they also had to spend the money to have all of the neighbors notified, which I was told last meeting is 65 cents an info. Yikes. And then, so my thinking is, it's just, they need to spend quite a bit of money for a small business, and I'm not sure why. Like, I think when this was implemented, we thought that the zoning officer would go make sure that all of these were followed through. I mean, the Board of Health still comes and passes inspection. You've got the fire, it comes and all of those things. And have you ever had the zoning agent come? And once, I think you had them, so you moved the truck.
Yeah, I think just once.
Okay. And then, but.
Actually, twice.
Twice, yeah. But my thing was that it's kind of an onerous thing for a small business that we've never had any problems with. I mean, you've been there how long?
Seven years.
Seven years and.
Seven years, June.
And we haven't had a complaint for it. It follows through on everything as far as, you know, their quarries and their insurances and their fire and their board of health. And so $400 is a lot of hot dogs. And I'm sure you must pay insurance on all of these things and employees and all that business. So I don't know. I just wanted to ask if we can take it out of the hands of the ZBA unless we had a complaint. You know, go to this hearing this year and then put it out and not have them do it every year or every two years. You know, go to this hearing this year and then put it out and not have them do it every year or every two years. That was my thinking. Yes?
It's my understanding that the ZBA would be willing to, after this next, um, application, would be willing to give them pretty much, and I may be speaking out of turn, but I have spoken to people that are members of the ZBA and they seem to be willing to consider not doing this every couple of years, but basically letting them stay where they are and not have, you know, and make this permit from the ZBA basically good until they either stop doing it or they wanna sell their businesses.
Well, that's kind of part of the conditions too, is if you sold the business, then all of this is null and void and they have to start from the get-go. So... So, and that's my understanding too, that they would consider that you would go to the zoning board for that appointment. They would notify everybody that needs to be notified. The four hundred dollars is all the administrative cost. And then, um, you know, at that time, ask them to, you know, move it out. And, um, and with me, I, it was always supposed to be the zoning officer that was just checking on the business as far as, you know, getting, getting the truck moving and things like that. But those are things that can be discussed at the ZBA meeting. Do you have any thoughts on this, Kristen?
So you just wanna take this out of the hands of the ZBA and lessen the fees? And have them be just a one-time as opposed to...
Yeah. Well, they still have to pay all the other fees, like the common vic, the border health, the fire inspection. They still have to do all those. But the ZBA is an extra four hundred bucks on top of what you actually need to provide the business.
I mean, as long as the ZBA is good with that also.
Well, they have to set up a hearing. Did you hear anything about a hearing yet? Um, I have the app. I'm gonna drop it off tomorrow. I wanted to go tonight first to see what was, you know, what we had to do. So I'll get the app in.
It makes sense to have it be a one-time as long as the business is gonna stay there. So I don't see why they would have to keep going back every two years if it's the same owner, same business. So that would make sense to me.
I'm gonna agree with that, but I do have some questions. How long is this license good for, this annual? Or is it multiple years?
You have to renew your common vic every year.
Yeah, mobile food truck would be a year, common vic's a year, border health is a year, all that stuff. The ZBA, which was for use, um, I think they did it in three-year increments.
I think it was two.
It might have been two.
Two.
I think, you know, it's no different than getting a special permit for a variance, right? Why would you have to go back if you got approved once, right? That's, as long as the use doesn't change or the property, the owners don't change, right? So I would be in favor of supporting a one-time variance or use permit or whatever you wanna call it, rather than... Yeah, a special permit.
Special permit? All right. Well, what I would like to do is to show our support of that is send the ZBA a letter saying, you know, the select board.
So one more question. Was there something that drove this to put this revocation here at one point?
I'm sorry, what was it?
Did something, did something happen that this policy came into play?
Something happened. It had nothing to do with, um, this particular business. No, there was another, there were several people that were coming into town and asking for, you know, food truck permits and things like that. We didn't have a policy so much. So then it, it really came down to, we had two. And one was done that looked really permanent and is actually on some town property. It's not, it's not their truck.
So I guess the next question, and I hate to beat the devil's advocate here, but what happens at the point where there becomes an issue? And I'm not saying there's going to be. Where does the enforcement come at that point? Border Health? Uh, you know, there's there's this drag racing out in front of their place, you know, and people are...
That would be police.
Okay, well, so the police are gonna deal with the drag racing, but they're not gonna deal with maybe the, the business owner that's... I'm just playing devil's... Something drove this. That's what I'm getting at. Something made this come into play that I don't know about or I'm not seeing.
Yeah, well, that's...
I think when this first started, they went down, they took all the rules from...
Would you like to get up to the podium and...
Yeah.
Okay.
I think when it started, they, a lot of the rules came from Wellfleet down the Cape, and I think they were just searching for stuff. So I think a lot of that got incorporated into the what's in now, I guess.
And it didn't actually come through the ZBA originally, right? Came from the select board at the time, the Board of Selectmen at the time. So, and again, it wasn't anything to do with this particular scenario. Nothing about drag racing. I don't know where you're getting the drag racing, but that's okay.
It was the cleanest thing I could think of. I had a few other ideas, but I don't think you would like them.
Drag racing.
So I get your point is that the Barubis have been a great business, right? What happens if we have somebody in here who's not and would...
In another section of town or anywhere in town.
Well, well, the thing is, it'd have to come in and apply for... This is just about them coming back every two or three years when the business has, you know, is doing what they're supposed to do as far as getting all their licenses and their insurances and no complaints from the neighbors.
But if there are complaints, then how do you handle it if they're not coming back every two years?
Just like you do with anything else. When there's a complaint, you bring a man in and you say, what are you gonna do? And how are you gonna fix it? That's what we do with other, other things that happen in town. What is it, Bill?
I was just gonna say, the ZBA piece should be a one and done. We've let several businesses move in, get their special permit. Here's the conditions that you have to follow. Everything else is annual, so they're doing their annual border health inspections. They get their annual common vic. If we were having issues with them, no different than any other business, we would say, what's going on with this?
What's going on?
You get your annual food permit, I mean, your mobile vendor permit here. So if we were having issues, you'd hold one or the other or both, depending on what's going on. But for these, I think they would be in the same situation if they're in the same location, same owners, everything, that the ZBA piece should be one and done with whatever reasonable, you know, conditions are applicable. And I can't remember the original, um, conditions, but it had to be moved annually.
Yes.
Or, and obviously...
The show was mobile.
Yeah.
And the trail was registered. So I mean, if the property you own is set tomorrow, you're gonna haul that out of there. Obviously, you're gonna be able to get down there and drag it out of there. It's really not an issue either.
All right. So you guys know we are in support of the one and done for the ZBA. So you do this hearing this year. We will propose that to them. And then we move forward and just keep up with your licenses, et cetera, and so on. And again, just like any other business, when somebody has a problem with it, a resident, or they come in and they complain to us and then we drag these people in and say, what are you gonna do about it? Sat through a few of those, haven't we, Kama? Yeah, so, all right.
That sounds good.
All right. I would make a motion that we do just that, support, uh, the food truck. One and done.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Neither.
Smith, I.
France and I.
No drag races.
Yeah, no drag racing.
Unless it's me and you.
Couple antique trucks.
You can do drag racing with the food truck and a plow. And then we'll have you all in here or we'll come visit you. All right. Thanks, guys. Good luck.
Thank you and happy new year.
Same to you. All right. And then you're up, Ms. Sherry. You and Bill.
So Sherry may have more of the historical knowledge on the first time we put this out, which happened just like weeks before everything shut down with COVID. There's two paper copies of the responses. I emailed them out a couple of weeks ago. So we put an RFP out, the field study behind the schools and the muddy pond field.
Minus the building from what was proposed.
Yeah. To get a real focus on what we have and to maximize the fields. Also get a maintenance plan of how we wanna maintain and upkeep those to get and keep them in the best possible shape, moving forward and maximize what we have for field space since there is some space we don't use and use very freely.
Yeah, and we've got, you know, two softball fields and a Babe Ruth field that share the outfield. And Kesswells plays there soccer, so it's a matter of... The organizations have been amazing with juggling the schedules amongst themselves, so everybody has the opportunity to play. But it would be really nice if we didn't have to do that and soccer could play over here and softball could play over here, all at the same time. So that's what we're kind of like, wanna get a grasp of.
So several years ago, um, those funds were appropriated and it was put out to bid. Obviously, COVID, you know, kind of put a, you know, wrench in that one with everything shutting down. So they did receive it. So we sent it back out to the companies that did bid the first time and then a few other ones from recommendations that we'd received. We only received two, the two that we have there. So the two were Activitas and Gale. Both gave, um, really good presentations to us and the information. We did, I don't know if you wanna...
I'll drop them where I need to.
All right.
Just stand there and look pretty. That's it.
She gets the next item too on the agenda, so. Uh, Activitas came in at fifty-six thousand and Gale came in at sixty-two thousand. So we're gonna make the, we were making the recommendation based on the presentation and the price that we were to move forward with Activitas.
Can you tell me what the difference was in pricing from when we first got there?
Money approv... I don't have the price sheets from the first time.
I don't have the price sheets from the first one, but the first, um, RFPs that went out a few years back also included a building, which, so...
Right.
They would be significantly higher than what Bill and I would be receiving now.
So the building is off the table for now?
For now.
I'd like to add that for now.
Yes.
Okay, and... All right. Any questions?
No questions.
And they, both of them planned, you know, on getting this done pretty much by the end of the fiscal year, whoever we were to move forward with, so.
Let's go with twenty-four?
Yeah.
All done?
Just the site plan.
Huh?
Just the site plan, not the actual...
Oh, I was gonna say.
Master planning work.
Yeah.
He did quick.
But that involves, you know, soil samples and testing this and designing that, you know.
You've done some pretty impressive work in other places, which is...
Fairly local areas. I know some of them were neighboring, were somewhat neighboring towns.
David, anything from you?
Nothing.
Nada?
Nope.
All right. And we have the money for the site plans?
Yep.
That was approved in, I think, FY twenty and
Yeah.
And it went by the wayside for a couple of years and we've got a chance to get back to it.
Joe hasn't spent it?
No.
He kept it hidden.
Yeah. It's under, it's under the, it's under the mattress. Well, I would entertain a motion that we, um, have Sherry and Bill move forward with the Activitas engineering proposal, or site plan for our field studies.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Lou and I?
Smith, I.
France and I. All right. Thanks, Sherry. I'm glad to see this moving aging towards something.
Just to get an idea of what we have and what we can make best use of it.
Yeah.
But we, we did add the muddy pond fields, which were not included in the first round of things.
Yes. Yeah, it was just like Griffin Road.
Yes, right. Okay. All right.
And my road race.
And their road race?
And my road race coming up on April sixth.
And you got all of your ducks in a row with the police?
Got all my ducks in a row. I got the extra insurance certificate from US TFA. Same action plan as before. I've already reached out to both fire and police to let them know that I'm doing, you know, what I'm doing to keep fire on alert for the EMS and to get details from the Sterling police. Last year, we had a hundred and thirty people register. We ended up with a hundred and eleven runners actually show up that day. So I'm hoping to have the hundred and thirty show up this year.
It's gonna be good weather.
It was beautiful last year, so.
Did you have anything to do with the race this past weekend?
No.
Okay. Questions?
Just, I've read through it all and thank you for having everything in perfect order, is all I have to say.
Thank you.
How's that done? David?
No, thank you. That's all.
And I would entertain a motion to approve, uh, the Sterling Rex road race for April sixth.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Lou and I?
Smith, I.
France and I.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. All right. So, uh, flag policy. There was a lot of questions on that. And I think I'll just give it to Bill to explain what the purpose is of bringing this up now.
Sure. We, so we'd always, it seems to have a written or unwritten slash declared policy just to fly our own flags. A couple of years ago, there was a Supreme Judicial Court case involving the city of Boston where they would fly certain flags and then denied somebody else another one. And, uh, obviously, the city of Boston lost that case and then had to fly it. So, um, many cities and towns are putting into place an actual written policy as to what they need to do. I would recommend having ones that we would, um, go with official, you know, US Massachusetts POW MIA flags and not have it as a place for speech, you know, of groups to fly a different flag on our polls.
Does that mean a spoke building policy?
Yes.
Questions?
No.
So if, uh, businesses are, you know, sure, whoever else wants to do something, just...
It's up to them.
Yeah.
It's the, it's the right thing to do.
Always good to have it. Can be thrown. All right, so, um, you wanna actually go over this or you just wanna publish it on the website?
So the, the policy, the purpose of it, obviously, is to define what we're doing. So flags of the governments, recognized by the federal government, POW MIA flag, and, um, would be the ones that would be allowed. So that would be the, the big thing. We can put that on the website, should it be approved. And if you want any changes, we can certainly do that. This, uh, this, with some tweaks has come from another town.
Well, I would entertain a motion to accept this flag policy.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Neither.
Smith, I.
France and I. All right, and then how about, um, your, your report, Bill? You wanna go over that?
It's not a whole lot since just before the Christmas holiday, but this week, we've got the auditors in, uh, conducting their annual financial audit for the town. And it seemed to be going pretty smoothly. Obviously, we've had a little hiccup with some of our software conversion because things were in two different spots. But overall, it seems to be going reasonably well. Yeah. Technology piece. Uh, budget update would be... Budget update would be, budgets are due Friday, so I would imagine that the finance committee will start getting their schedule together for the spring, and when they wanna start bringing departments in, make their recommendations for capital, and figure out what they wanna do for budget. We do have a new member of the collective treasurer's office who started yesterday, Megan Henley. The MMA conference is coming up on the nineteenth and twentieth, so I will be attending. I haven't heard from any of you that you want to, so attend. But if you change your mind, I'm sure we can get you registered. And then, nothing new on the shared services, either for conservation or building commissioners, since it's been two weeks of holiday stuff, so. Nothing else too substantial. Ryan and I have been working with a couple vendors, trying to get some pricing on the storage building, if that's an option with the funds from ARPA that were approved earlier a few years ago. But right now, I think that's about it.
Have they started with this implementation, of the school's security systems, or?
So I think they were working on getting the agreement together with-
American Alarm.
American Alarm, and I think they were gonna wait for the next vacation to start, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. That was the last time I had talked to their folks.
They're doing both schools?
Yeah. So I know the quote that they had originally put together was more than a hundred thousand dollars, so they had to obviously pare back some things to, to get to the hundred.
Any questions for Bill?
Any new news on when we'll get the drawings back for the downtown?
So we've got some of the, so we have a twenty-five percent complete design. Ryan has been working pretty close with them to try and get this in the next month or two, pretty well wrapped up.
My question.
David?
No questions.
'Cause we can put them under a spotlight, really. On the downtown thing, it's basically Ryan is working with them. And is Matt also getting around?
Everything under, everything underground.
Underground, so that's where they are right now?
Yeah.
All right. All right, something that's not on the agenda that I would like us to just talk a little bit about is the tax bills went out today. Or over the weekend, 'cause Vicki likes to send Happy New Years to everybody in town. But there's a lot of questions on it. And if people would look at, and maybe make it available online, the history of the last couple of years and the percentage increase which is actually happening. One thing I did notice was just from last year to this year. First of all, like you said, they, they all got reassessed. This was a re-
This was a reevaluation year.
Reevaluation. And if you look at the difference on average homeowners increase, the housing supposedly increased like sixty thousand dollars.
Every single family, yeah.
Single value. So a lot of the questions are, and Joe would love these questions, you know, what are we getting for that? You know, what are we getting for our taxes? Which sometimes I think we have to remind people of all the things that we do get. And then people get upset with me when I say, well, look at Lancaster, look at Bolton, look at all these other towns, and we're still in a very good place as far as what our taxes are and what the services are that we get. Unfortunately, half of that money, or better, goes to the schools. And if you go to town meeting, or if you've been to town meeting, you know very rarely do we vote down anything for the schools. I mean, we can sit all day long and talk till we're blue in the face as far as a board, as far as finance committee. We can ask the schools and the administration to pare back, and it literally goes nowhere. We're with five other, oh, four other towns, so. Everybody in the same boat, not everybody is always in the same boat. That's one thing. So that's half of your taxes right there. And then look at the services you get. We have a very vibrant and responsive fire department, police department, library, senior center, recreation.
DPW.
I'm getting there, Joe. DPW. Man. And we have some really good leadership and employees that work for this town, and sometimes we can't even keep them because we can't keep up with the other towns and what they're paying their employees, or at least giving them the benefits. So you get a lot. You get, you talk DPW, there's not a lot of towns around here that get free trash pickup, you know, and free arrows, yay. But, um, so I, I would think that, that people would wanna, before they start calling and texting, maybe they want to reassess what they're actually getting. And every time, and that's why we need more economic development, you know? That's, that's the key. We have some areas now that the planning board and Ster- and Stephen are looking at that would be available if we could change some of the zoning, and not saying no to these businesses that come in, you know? Put in those conditions, which, that's what's gonna do it, is the economic development. And, and it's very exciting to have these really nice neighborhoods around. And in, like in my area, they're talking about one of the new houses going up. It's gonna be one point one million dollars, that's beautiful. What does that do to me? Because it's all based on comps. So if you're paying, if your place is worth six hundred thousand dollars, then mine must be worth that, would be my guess. And, and that's what we're getting taxed on, so. I, I, I've had a loss sometimes as to how to respond to people about this, you know? And somebody can say, you know, put your boots on, you're full of shit, but I, those are the facts of life. And everything has gone up, everything has gone up. You go to the markets, you know it's all gone up. But here, look at your insurance bills, whether it be health, house, car, whatever it is, it's all gone up. Gas has gone up, and a lot of our vehicles, surprisingly, run on gas and oil. And I, and I think that it's hard because this is me and my wallet, and I don't necessarily wanna give it to everybody, but if you wanna well-run municipality, you're gonna have to pay the taxes. And I think our departments and, and I'm sure Joe and his little committee are keeping track of it. Our departments are very good about staying within their budgets and not doing the increases that are not necessary. They're not buying the extra paper clips or pens, what they need. So, but I, I think that we need to put that out there, that, that the increases are really not as bad as they look. And I will say personally, my significant other went down to Northborough. His taxes on his building were forty-one hundred dollars last year. And this is a business. And this year, they're seventy-one, seventy-two hundred dollars in a year. And that's because the guy next door sold his place for a half a million dollars. And the guy across from him sold his place for a little bit better than a half a million dollars. And that's what the state looks at, and that's what the towns look at. So, had to fight, and they don't have any kids going to school. So, you know, it's, it's a tough time, and, and you can't help but feel for people. But we're all kinda in the same boat, so.
All they have to do is drive on our roads and then drive on some of the neighboring towns. And there was a lot of new roadway put in this year with the budget. And I think every taxpayer should be thankful for that, 'cause we have great roads now.
Between the state and town, we've done, I don't know, five or six million dollars worth of construction work in the last couple of years.
And then you drive into, I drive into neighboring towns, and all of a sudden, you hit all the posables after that, so. It's nice to get back to Sterling.
Yeah. You know, like you said, the DPW, they do a good job, and they're very-
I mean, that's, that's something, Maureen, that, that people know is there. It's improved, it's much better than it was.
Except that, it's your road. What's my road? That's the thinking. It's like, well, my road sucks, and it's like, well...
Yeah.
I'm not saying mine does, I don't, I don't care.
I know, there's always comparisons, but generally speaking, a lot was done this year.
Yes, yes. And there's plans to do a lot more as we move forward. So, um, anyway, I just wanna put that out there, and you can, you know, you can always go to the assessors and have them come visit your house, buy them a cup of coffee, maybe they'll revalue your house to a buck twenty-five off. I don't know, so. Anything else stated, I'm off my soapbox here.
Nothing related to taxes, but I do have a question. Seeing as though John was so polite in gifting me with the Earth Day Townwide Cleanup.
Yes.
Who sets that date? Because the weekend prior and the weekend after are both conflicting on my schedule.
I don't understand.
Earth Day's on twenty-second of April. The weekend prior, I've got booked events, and the weekend after, I've got booked events. So who sets the date for the Townwide Cleanup?
Actually, it was the Economic Development Committee that had been sponsoring that over all these years. So Jim Pattikey, who you might wanna talk to, or Paul Cathcart, or Dick Mackey, or Brian Kendorf. Believe in somebody.
I think they've handed that off, though, right? To, so I think you set the date, don't you? Along with the DPW, probably, 'cause they will.
Dick Mackey gifted me a file on it after last year's Townwide Cleanup.
All right, so we-
Did you copy you on that too, Bill? Was I the only one that brought that folder?
Me, yeah.
All right, well, I think we can, so Earth Day, you can't do Earth Day. You can, we can pick a date, whatever's convenient for you.
All right, that was, I guess, my question. So I'll ask Ryan how he feels about it.
Okay.
Maybe look at school calendar too, 'cause I think that's around spring break sometimes, just to make sure we have all of our families here, if they wanna come out together.
No, it wasn't anything to do with that, it was all about Earth Day.
Well, right, but it kinda-
But you can change it.
Wouldn't have anything then in March.
Nothing, nothing is written in stone.
April, though. Yeah, whatever Patriot's Day is, is that?
Yeah. Sometimes I think they coincide.
Yeah. When is Earth Day this year, does it tell you?
Twenty-second of April, which is a Monday.
So, yes, so you're not gonna do it on Monday?
Correct.
It usually is on a Saturday.
Yeah, the twentieth.
Okay.
Booked.
That's when you want it?
Nope, that's when I'm booked.
Okay.
And then the following weekend, I'll be in Missouri.
Not gonna be able to do a lot of cleanup there.
Well, maybe it will be, I don't know.
Maybe you can do it on a Wednesday.
You can be in charge of theirs.
Maybe you can do it on a Wednesday, just, you know, to fill your calendar. We, we can come up with something. As, as a board, we can support you in this endeavor.
Thank you.
And pick a date. Look, Sherry's willing to help, she's got the file. All right, is that it?
Should've left all your answers.
Excellent, thank you.
You mentioned the taxes and economic development, so I think we should just plug in for Stephen Wallace, the town planner. I know coming up in March, I think he's gonna be asking-
He's coming to us, either next meeting or the meeting after.
Right, but he's gonna be asking for input from-
Don't do it. Yeah, so it's not to make that public.
Oh, okay.
He's gonna come in and do a presentation in March.
Sounds good.
He's coming to our board to do his annual work plan coming up. Eventually, he does plan on having some economic forums.
Right.
Which he'll announce.
All right, so just be on the lookout for him coming to our meeting, then. And pay attention to him.
He's kind of a, not tall guy and bald, and always has a nice sweater on when he comes. All right, Mr. King, how's it going?
Going well, Maureen. We have full staff on both CBC and Finance Committee, very thankfully. And in keeping with the budget that Bill announced, we're gonna have the budget close on this Friday. I guess all, all inputs are coming in this Friday, Bill.
Yeah, like, there's a couple that have their word meeting after that'll get in late, but not too bad.
Yeah, we have our, our budget kickoff meeting on the ninth of January, so that's next Tuesday, if we're starting that cycle. And we'll keep up the date with all the changes as they come in. With the full staff right now on, on both boards, I was looking at the vacancy page on our website, and it's very well-maintained and it's got great accuracy. But one thing I noticed is, even though we have zero vacancies showing on both CBC and Finance Committee, I don't know when the next vacancy is gonna emerge, you know? So if there's any way we can modify the wording to, despite having zero vacancies, you are encouraged to still put your application in with comma, if that's possible.
Very wordy.
We have kind of like a bullpen if, if we need to pull on.
I would, in general, invite people to your meetings. It's a public meeting, anybody can go to the finance meeting, it's on the calendar. Come and see what they do.
I'm speaking selfishly for Finance and CBC, but I think it applies to every committee.
Absolutely.
Even if there's zero vacancy, we should encourage applications if you wanna volunteer. Say, you know, say something like, even though there are no vacancies right now, feel free to put your application in because we may need to call on you in the future. And that way, we have a deck built of people already.
Sure. I can see them rolling in already, Joe.
And I do read the website, so, thanks for the great maintenance on them.
All right. Cam, anything from you?
All set.
All set? Okay, well, one last thing. Happy New Year to everybody, and try and stay healthy, because obviously... And nobody is exempt. There's so much going around, so, thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
You and I?
Smith and I.
Grant's and I.